All right, so we do have a presentation today from, I'm sorry, Paul, I didn't ask you how to pronounce your last name.
Mylonis.
Mylonis, okay, regarding the replacement of geothermal heat pumps, so you are on.
Yeah, so it's going to be more of a discussion. How can I bring you down? There was a, um, she must have a line with us as well. We're getting that.
Okay.
Right now.
Eric, just a moment.
Yep.
So just kind of piggyback some last month when I brought those couple papers through, all of it kind of having a chance to look over. Been working with Alliant and Gardner on possible heat pump replacement on an investment tax credit, section 48, and pretty much possibly could get up to 40% tax incentive. Mike, myself, John Adams have all been involved with meetings with Paul and Andrew and Joe, I believe, but there's a lot, a lot of different names. We've had a lot of people in the Zoom meetings, so we're at the beginning phases, so.
Make sure they can hear.
Yeah, we got the thumbs up.
So I'll turn it over to Paul to kind of go over.
Yep, so real quick, just who Gardner is and then who Alliant is and then how we work together. So Gardner is a mechanical, we're a mechanical contractor. We're based out of Cleveland. We also have a office in Fort Wayne, Indiana. So we work, especially in the northeast Ohio area, I would say 60% of all the K through 12 buildings in northeast Ohio basically do work with Gardner. Either they're buying things from us, services from us, or solutions from us. So we are very tied into the K through 12 market. And what we do a little different as a mechanical contractor, especially in a market that is government-driven, is we understand that it's our responsibility to put forth a good project, right? To install good HVAC that lasts and solutions that are economical. But we also have figured out that for us to be effective, we have to find ways to fund projects outside of capital budgets, right? Capital budgets are shrinking. The, what's there right now, there is a lot of leverage on who should get those dollars. And typically, building upgrades don't fall high on the list. So we learned probably 10 years ago, in order for us to be effective, we've got to assist with funding mechanisms. And that rolls perfectly into what we're going to talk about today, and that's this in that investment tax credit. So we would be the mechanical contractor. Alliant is a tax consulting firm. So their role is to collect all the data, submit it to the IRS, to ensure that you receive the credit that we promise you that you're going to get before the project starts. So they would represent the district when it comes to the IRS and any questions having to do with that funding rebate for the program. So that's the role that Gardner plays and that's the role that Alliant plays. So basically, part of the investment tax credit statutes that went out a couple of years ago, they were trying to boost new construction of different types of mechanicals, geothermal being one of them. So initially, it was meant for private entities, right? If they invested in a geothermal system, they would get a tax rebate on their taxes because they're privately held, correct? They've expanded it out into the public domain to say, there are enough public entities out there that have, for sure, geothermal, solar for sure, and we feel that we should extend that same tax credit to public entities. But it doesn't come off as a credit on your taxes, you don't pay taxes. It comes back as a direct rebate for doing the project. So as we sit today, I think the timing could not be better for Hicksville for several reasons. You've got a wonderful system, geothermal system, that's working exactly as it should. It's coming to its end of life. There are components that you've already seen fail, and you will, certainly in the next two to three years, you'll see that cascading effect move exponentially. You're just going to see these heat pumps start failing at a higher rate, right? So up until this point, it's been ones and twos. And we contacted the district to say, would you be interested in looking at this tax credit? The net effect to the district would be a four, it's basically 40% off the cost of the project. So we would put together the project, Alliant would bless the project, and then we could do a project for the district and get you 40% off of the entire project. Anything to have, anything having to do with the install. So it could be the engineering, it could be project management, it could be the heat pumps themselves, basically, any unit that is part of the geothermal, it could be your building automation system, although I don't think that's an issue at this point. But anything that touches the geothermal system would come in and be part of that 40% tax rebate. So where we sit in the project right now, and Alliant can expand on this a little bit, is, as, you know, I explained to Eric and Mike probably a month ago, there are a series of stop and start steps, right? So the first start was, you had geothermal, does it make sense to have the discussion? We stopped and we had the discussion. Then we said, does it make sense to move further into the process? At that point, the district said, let's move further into the process. So right now, we, we are starting again, and the part of the process that we're in with Alliant is, there are rules that you have to fulfill to get the rebate. And I, I don't want to go into it in too much depth. It's called the 80/20 rule. It has to do with cost of the original equipment, depreciation of the equipment, and does it fulfill this 80/20 rule? I, I don't want to get too wrapped around the axles on how the 80/20 works, but that's, again, that stopping point that says, you fulfilled the 80/20 rule or you have not. If you fulfill the 80/20 rule, then we start up again, right? Then we start looking at a project, and we start talking to the district about your appetite to do a project that is inevitable. And this, it really is, it's perfect timing for the district in that this tax credit's out there. Otherwise, if the tax credit's not out there, financially, you've got to figure out a way to forecast how we're going to replace these 165, I think?
145.
145 heat pumps. And you've done a great job just piecemealing it together because they've gone out one by one, but our engineers internally, as well as external engineers, had said Hicksville could be looking at some type of, they're calling it a tsunami in the future, right? Where these heat pumps just start bam bam, they're going to start going, boards are going to start blowing, mechanically, they're going to start failing, and it's the primary piece that heats into each individual room. So I'm here to say that the good news is, there is a huge government program out there that can help the district pay for this project. So with that, I'll open it up to the board for questions.
I will say one thing on that tax credit is, like we said last time, the, the school would have to front all the money upfront for the whole project, no matter what the total cost is.
Correct.
And then, let's say this would typically be a summer project, and let's just say the project got done in August, right before school started, you would not be able to get that tax money back until the following tax season, and let's just say 2026 is when the project took place, 2027 would be the earliest you'd be able to get your, your refund, your tax credit. But, so you would have to put all the money upfront. And commercial-grade geothermal heat pump, water source heat pump, they typically have a life expectancy of 20 to 25 years. Our heat pumps were manufactured in 2007, so I know our building's 16 years old, they were bought and they sat on shelves for a little while, but they're, you're going on 16 to 18 years old. The whole building, when they were in here painting, doing the carpet and everything else, they had all the, all the units running during that whole timeframe. So they're 17, 18 years old, so in the next five to seven, I mean, five years, I would say we're going to start having more. So far, out of the 145, we've replaced six of them so far, including the one that's in this room.
So are we looking at replacing, as the project, all?
Well, that's part of the 80/20 part.
139, because to me, I would rather replace, replace 139 and get 40% off versus.
There it is.
You know, some of them at a time, and maybe I'll get five years out of this one, but then I have to pay full price for that, to me that.
Oh, no, it makes complete, yeah. So we talked about it really, I know Keith and I have talked, and Mike and I have talked, you don't know when they're going to quit working.
Right, absolutely.
And you talked to any of the contractors, we've had Dunbar's been here, Weenashire Mechanical's been here to work on them, and they're pretty much, you know, do you want to dump $2,000 or $3,000 into a unit that's 17, 18 years old? And still, that's just like replacing the compressor, putting a filter, dryer, stuff in. That doesn't include the circuit boards or anything else for the communication part of it. And it's, no, you don't want to put more money into them. And so as they start failing, you almost need to replace a unit one at a time. What we've been doing is, we've had a couple of units go out in the wintertime, we have a couple of space heaters, and we've been lucky that it's been one room. And then all of a sudden, it went from heating season to cooling season, we got one portable air conditioner, and we vented out the window, and we were able to make it till summertime, and then that, over the summer, they put a new heat and air conditioning unit in. So you never know, and I know last, we had a board meeting probably four or five months ago, and we're at, I was asked about, well, could we buy spare heat pumps and just set them on the shelves? We have, what, 20 different?
26 different types of heat pumps, which would, which would make it, you know.
The hardest stockpile would be putting them on a shelf to have a spare.
And Murphy's Law is going to tell you, the one that goes out is the one that you don't have on the shelf, so.
Why, why do we have 26 different?
Some of them are size of rooms. Some of them are like vertical heat pumps for, let's say, the, the gym, some of them for the kitchen. We have stole units in the dry food storage, classrooms for the most part, most classroom units are the same.
Okay.
But then you get into a room that's a half room, like second floor elementary, but those are a little bit smaller. Then you get like the art room and the science rooms, those are a little bit bigger, so those have two filters in them. So you have, I would say, five or six when it comes to the classrooms that are pretty, pretty much the standard for the most part. But when we start talking about, well, do you do all the elementary? Do you do all the high school? Do you do all the office? Do you do everything on the first floor? And then you do everything on the first floor, and the very first week of school, you have two or three go out on the second floor. And so we've talked about it, well, maybe just do them one at a time. Well, then, Paul and them come along and said, well, there's this project that we could possibly do, you get 40%, are you guys interested in talking? And we said, of course we are. But then we start finding, I, I made a list of things that, like Unis, I was maybe thinking are, there's been some problem child ones, and then we start talking to Paul and Andrew, then we kind of find out, well, this doesn't qualify. I mean, it's a lot of them, if not all of them, to do the project.
It has to be sizable enough for the tax credit, because initially, the tax credit was in place for new construction. So what they were trying to do is get schools like Hicksville 17 years ago to implement geothermal, right? Or some type of different HVAC solution. And then they opened it up and said, it's, we've got to do it to government entities as well, but we can't, there are so many, we can't choose two, two heat pumps, right? Just the paperwork involved to get the rebate. So the conference, like, it's got to be a sizable project. That's the 80/20 is the size of the project. Again, let's not get too wrapped around the axles on the mechanics of it, but Alliant will, we've got your building plans, and right now, both Alliant and Gardner, there are, there's no charge for what we're doing. Everything we're doing is just part of our everyday service. So we understand, we can't charge for these things until we understand, is the money there and can we help you get it funded?
Well, I know you say right now that you can't charge us, but can you give us an idea?
Oh, no, yeah, so, and my apologies. Let's do this start, stop thing again, right? So right now, I'll be back in a couple of days to look at some of these heat pumps. Andrew's firm has got the drawings as well, so we are in a start process to figure out just how big does the project have to be to meet the 80/20? What's the dollar threshold? And is the heat pump project big enough? And then if it's, Andrew says to Gardner and the district, you have fulfilled the 80/20 rule, we are confident we're going to get you 40% back. Then Gardner's going to come to you and say, we're going to come to you with a number that's probably plus or minus 10%. And it's at that point where we want to make sure that, and the reason we don't do a full engineering is there's a ton of dollars involved on our end to do that. We are more than willing to sit down with the district and do better than a ballpark, closer to a good estimate, and the goal of it is to say, A, financially, how does it work with the district, right? So here's the project cost, let's take 40% of that and say, you'll have to pay for it, but it's coming back to the district, which really means the outlay to the district is going to be this much money for the project. And if that time, the, the district understands, along with the administration, that we have the money, we, and this is your decision completely, we have the money, we think it's a prudent use of the money, then we would start engineering and move forward with the project. But it's, the way I look at it is, there are two great things going on for the district. First thing is this tax credit. I mean, 40% is massive. The other part is, you're part of the Ohio Schools Council, and we are a member of the Ohio Schools Council. It's like state term pricing. So when we were selected to be part of the Ohio Schools Council, it was about a year and a half process. First, they vetted us out on our ability to deliver a project, and then secondly, they had to vet out our pricing. So we submitted full pricing to the OSC, which is basically state term pricing, and said, any member of the OSC will automatically receive these discounts. So you're walking in there with the discounts that the OSC can provide to the district as a member, which should be considerable, but not as considerable as the funds that Andrew's group is going to get you at a 40% rebate on that.
So Andrew, what are you going to share with us?
Yes, absolutely. Well, first off, thank you so much for having me on this meeting and being a part of this meeting. We'll give a quick introduction on Alliant, I just wanted to integrate that with that following, so I have to pick on words. But just a little background on our, our firm as well. I made your hot seat, by the way, to my home screen, by the way. You also call us science, technical, environmental, and all that. Just wanted to say, thanks for being on today. We are, we're a firm of top-class professionals. We work, we are headquartered in Houston, Texas. We're a team of professionals in the United States. Our leadership, we are led by five ex IRS commissioners, and our business is focused on government debt, tax credits, naturally those that require engineering expertise and specific legal expertise. We provide all of the technical, funding, legal, and energy resources qualified, qualified in sustaining the benefit of any of these tax credit or tax deduction studies that we will refer to. And generally speaking, this, in the same vein that Paul's being, our compensation model, that we do not get considered unless we are able to help you secure and receive the loss of the tax credit. Andrew, for a second, what do you tell?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that, and certainly want to highlight that, that Paul's good point. We've been looking into the project, we are here to be a resource for you all, to help you get funds back into the pockets of the district, and we're not interested in accepting any fee or charging any fee unless we're able to be successful in that, in that venture. So that's truly our mission, is getting funds back into the, into your hands. As far as anything I wanted to cover today, I think Paul did a really, really good job. So I've sent over a proposal to your team, it may be in the room right now as we speak, but that proposal outlines the expertise the judges highlighted and the services we would provide to verify, to substantiate with documentation, and then ultimately to defend, did the IRS ever have any questions? To do those three steps for the 80/20 rule itself, but also for the monetization of the credit, because once you say the 80/20 rule is blessed, and, you know, this project is large enough to qualify for a credit, well, now you have to go do the project, right? And the credit range, the 40% number's been run around a lot, it actually ranges from 6 to 50%. So 40% is very much on the high end of that scale, and it takes some work and some documentation and substantiation throughout the study, or, excuse me, throughout the project itself, to make sure that you're truly maximizing that credit at the end of the day. So the proposal that you all have from us is our services to verify the 80/20, make sure that we have a project, and that if the 80/20 was not verified, that we would terminate the agreement and no cost to you all, and if it is verified, we would then go forth with, you know, work alongside Gardner and the project team to make sure that the credit is maximized in the process. So I don't know if you have that available, if you wanted to share that with everybody or.
To date, it hasn't been, yet been shared with the board. The agreement hasn't.
Okay. Well, that's what the inclusion is. Were there any questions about that information that you discovered? Any thoughts?
Anyone?
The one thing I, I do want to add is, if, if you're blessed with the 80/20 and you get the percentage that is comfortable for the district to proceed with, right? There are certain things, this project has to be done in a way that still fits within the tax credit, right? And one of those pieces is Buy American. So the, one of the biggest responsibilities we have is to make sure that we implement the right hardware, that is, the Buy American, that will enable Andrew's group to go back and say, they fulfilled yet another piece of this tax credit, which should get them more back. So we work very closely together during the, you know, the inception through turnover to the district. So the first phase is, A, do you hit the 20? B, what's the size of the project and what's the rebate? And then if the district were to move forward, we are still working together because we've got to fulfill other pieces of this statute that would maximize the amount of rebate that you're going to get.
And one other thing I've asked them to include when they're doing their study is to provide us with a cost to operate. The new equipment versus our existing equipment, I'm not sure how much more efficient the equipment is, but I know all of the new equipment will have ECM motors in it, and they're, so they'll have a low, medium, high speed, they run more efficiently, and so I'd also like to see what our cost to run or operate electrical wise and build, and then we're going to work on that too, so we can see how much cost savings would be per year also.
So not only an overall cost savings, but that efficiency piece built in too?
Yeah, correct.
And what can't be lost in any of this, because there are so many factors coming into this project now, right? We're looking at energy savings, we're looking at state funding, or, you know, state cost for hardware, we're looking at Alliant's getting back the rebate. The piece that I think really needs to be held under consideration is, you're at the end of the life cycle, right? And if these programs weren't here, how would you fund this project? But it's the perfect time to start really thinking hard about moving forward with a project like this.
So what kind of timeline are we looking at?
So we think, we're confident that we can, Andrew, I don't want to speak for you. Let, let's start off with your piece of it. So I'm going to be here probably Wednesday, and I'll get you all the plate information for each individual type of unit, and I'll supply that back to you. So once you receive those, how long till we get the 80/20 out?
Right, so, and I think we already have a little bit ahead to start on that, so we have the existing information, of course, what will be replaced, just to pull the curtain back a little bit, when Paul and the Gardner team say this is what's going to be replaced, they also have to give me a dollar figure, this 80/20 is all our financial ratio that we're looking at, and then what I'm going to do is determine the cost of what Paul has not replaced, essentially. And we're comparing those numbers to determine if the project is ultimately going to satisfy this 80/20. Now, where this comes into a little bit of a question is, if the scope and the price are still in question, if they're still kind of being finalized, if you will, then I could take a look at the scope and the cost of the project and say, this will or will not meet the 80/20 rule, that's based on what's going to be left in the book. You know, I can make that determination. To answer the question, that would probably be about a one to two week turnaround to gather all the information I need on the existing equipment. Now, of course, if that scope and that cost is still in question and is fluctuating a little bit, then I would need to be keyed in on that. Obviously, if it goes down in scope and in cost, then we may be in liberty or in jeopardy of not getting the 80/20 or losing the satisfaction of the game. But if you ever have a scope, you say, you know what, it's in my cards, let's go ahead and do a few more items, and the 80/20 is already blessed, then, you know, feel free to add to it in that regard. So as long as the, the scope and the cost are set, probably about a one to two week turnaround, and I can make that on a shorter end, just because I feel like we're not starting to prepare for this right now. I've already got some good information from Eric and the team.
And the way that, so once we get the information from him, the way that we're looking at the project right now internally, is we're saying, let's replace everything. That's not going to be the case, right? But we want you to have an understanding of what a full rip and replace would be. A, to say, we can't do it all now, but we understand there are additional pieces that we have to start planning for, so we think it's best for us to say, let's just give them a full rip and replace project. Then we sit down with the district and say, okay, that's the big number. Let's really look at this project. A, what do you think needs replaced? What is most urgent? But as important, what's the cost going to be, right? It's easy for me to come in here and say, whatever, millions and millions of dollars, let's rip it all out. I would rather give you the option for everything, give you a cost associated with that, Andrew's going to give you a bare minimum number. It has to be this size project. And then we can work with the district and say, okay, how much of this do you want to bite off, if any? And that's going to be the last piece of the project. So that would be our final scope, to say, okay, are we doing air handlers? Are, no, we're not going to do the air handlers, we're just going to look at the heat pumps. Are we looking at all the heat pumps? Well, I think we're at most, in most jeopardy in the high school and the middle school, right? So you'll determine, the district will always determine the scope of the project with our input. As I said, when I first met with the district, our job is to provide information so you guys can make a decision, and that's really what we're going to do. So I'm going to say on Andrew's end, he's two weeks, let's just be conservative and let's call it a month, because something's going to have to have, I'm going to get a phone call, Paul, you got to run down there, you got to go up in the ceiling tiles, I forgot this heat pump, we need pictures of this heat pump. So I would rather say a month and, and be conservative about it.
Well, the good news is that aligns with how often our board meetings occur.
It's a perfect, are there any questions on how it works? Would, would, you know, what, what questions, if, if any, are kind of floating around right now?
So just so I understand the 80/20 a little bit better.
Please.
It's 80% of what's currently applied from the standpoint of HVAC?
I'm going to let Andrew.
Yeah, that's a good question. So we're talking about a renovation project, right? So in essence, you could say, at the end of the renovation project, there are going to be some new components and some used components, right? Is that fair to say? Like, in a geothermal system, the way that nothing stands today, if we did the project, there would be some new components and then some old components, based on what partners installed. The later rule works is that 20% is the maximum that the value of those used components can make up, okay? So you take your value of the project, you got your new components and your used components, those used components cannot exceed 20% of the value of the overall project. So you have to determine what is the value of everything that's new, what's the value of everything that is to remain, and you create a ratio out. You want your new equipment to make up 80% or more, and you want your used equipment to make up 20% or less. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
And the thing that I think, I think everybody that's involved in a project like this has going for them is cost of HVAC has skyrocketed since COVID. Now, since the first installation of this, prices have probably gone up 200 to 300% just since COVID alone. We've seen equipment and installation go up 800%. So what was a $5,000 piece of equipment five years ago is now 10,000. That 5,000 piece of equipment five years ago was probably 3,000 12 years ago. So we're confident that just the rate of inflation since what you had installed and what's going to be left, I think we're fairly confident you're going to hit a nice percentage because of just inflation alone is what's going to help the district. So what the other piece that Gardner offers along with Alliant is, so Alliant is with the district just like a CPA is, right? So you get your taxes done, you hire a CPA. All of a sudden, you get a letter from the IRS, and the IRS says, we want to talk about that tax credit. Alliant represents the district in those matters. So they would sit with you and the IRS to make sure that all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed. Gardner does something very similar in that not, there aren't many mechanical contractors that do what we do. A, do all this work upfront for nothing. And B, find financing. But C, we offer backend guarantees for a project. And I don't want to bore you too much with how different type of construction projects work, but bid spec, this project, I guarantee was bid spec. So you hired a general contractor. District held all the contracts for all the contractors. And each one of those individual contractors gave you a one-year warranty on those products that they installed. After a year, it goes away. Gardner is much different in that we will guarantee, if the district is asking us, we will guarantee what the energy consumption is, right? So to Eric's point, if we see that there is energy savings to be had with new equipment, we will guarantee those energy savings. We will guarantee how the system performs. So it's on us to make sure that we engineer the right solution that will work best with the rest of the system. So it's a lot easier just to rip everything out and replace it with you. But if you're just going to do heat pumps, well, you still have all this other equipment that works in concert, literally works in concert with each other. And if you had one piece of equipment that isn't engineered the way the rest of the system is engineered, like a heat pump, there could be a significant issue there, right? So we are going to guarantee the functionality of the system, either that it functions like it originally functioned. Or do we think there's an ability to improve the functionality? And if we think there's room to improve functionality, we'll explain that to the district and we will guarantee that to you as well. So what it really comes down to is, for as long as we've been doing this, for us to be as successful as we have in the K-12 marketplace, we've got to provide funding solutions and we have to reduce risk for districts. Risk financially and then post-construction risk. And what that means is, if there's a problem post-construction, who do you call? In the typical construction arena, you would call that contractor. And you would tell that contractor, I've got an issue. With the way that we deliver our projects, which is design-build, we are the only contact that you'll have with this project. It's a single contract. It's between us and the district. So we will have a multitude of different types of laborers out here, right? We're going to have plumbers, we're going to have tanners, we're going to have electricians. If anything goes wrong with any of their work, that contract is with us and them. And our contract is with us and the district. So the district picks up the phone and says, listen, two of those heat pumps went down. The answer isn't, well, we have to figure out whose fault it is. Was it wired incorrectly? Was it installed incorrectly? Was it not balanced properly? The answer to the district is, we guarantee the functionality. We'll figure out whose fault it is. But you should not have to be chasing around different contractors trying to figure out whose fault it is. So there's that backend piece that really reduces risks for districts.
So you mentioned the heat pumps specifically as having a failure rate after 20 to 25 years. What about the other parts of the system?
So your geothermal field typically about 50-year lifecycle for the actual piping in the ground and everything is what I've seen.
Yeah, that's about right, yeah.
50 years for the field itself. Our geothermal pumps, we've replaced three VFDs, one for each one already in the last year and a half. We rebuilt one of the geothermal pumps because the seal was leaking. We had the seal rebuilt, and then they ended up having to do the thrust bearing and everything. We're almost to the part where the other two couldn't possibly use it. I think our makeup air units are okay. We don't run those near as much as we run the rest of the equipment. And our, but our vertical heat pumps that do our cafeteria, our small gym, our large gym, those are all units that run 24/7, seven days a week, try to maintain temperature and humidity. This would have nothing to do with anything out in the field house. Those are all equipment that they were provided, they provided us. But that would be none of that equipment, but it'd just be the geothermal section. But we have six heat pumps that were already replaced. I wouldn't plan on replacing those again. Those, I'd have to look to see what the oldest one is, which is the elementary guidance room. See how old that unit is. But I think most of them would all, those six, we'd keep, not replace those. So, but the other 139, we'd be looking at possibly getting a price to replace all of them, of course. But then we can take some of that stuff away, but.
Any other commentary from the board? Thank you, guys, for joining us. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks for your time. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, with the presentation, if you would like to leave, you absolutely may.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So guess what, principals, you're up. Who gets to start this time?
I'll start because that'll be fun to follow.
All right, judge your man, let's go. What's left?
I'll try and go quick. So we're all going through state testing right now. I know probably each of us will touch on it. But in the middle school, we wrapped up ELA last week. Over the next two weeks, we're going to be conducting math and science tests. I just want to say thank you to the students. They are really, really giving great effort on their tests. I want to say thanks to all the proctors and the readers, to all of our small groups and one-on-ones. That's a lot of work, and they're doing a really great job with that. Our tested area teachers for preparing our students, a lot of fun and engaging activities, especially lately for reviews and different things. So I want to thank them. And just all of our teachers and administrators and just everyone in the building, Mr. Bassett, just everyone for being so flexible in our holding areas, different kids testing at different times. There's a lot that goes into it, but I think all of the administrators will agree that that is a big part of what makes us so successful here. So just want to say thanks to everyone for that. Next, I want to say great job to our track team members in the middle school. So far throughout the early part of the season, they're doing an awesome job. We're real excited for the next several meets. But I also wanted to mention specifically that Hicksville will be hosting the middle school GMC Track Meet. That's going to take place here on Monday, May 12, obviously at the track, starting at 4 o'clock. And then lastly, I just wanted to hit on several of the exciting Hicksville initiative events that the middle school is going to have in May. We do something each grade level. Our fifth graders are going to be participating in an etiquette dinner on May 13. Students are going to go to St. John Lutheran Church, where a meal is going to be prepared for them. They will have worked on table manners, etiquette, discussion skills, and a whole bunch of our essentials that they're going to be able to put on display that day. So we're excited for our fifth graders to participate in that. Our sixth graders are going to compete in the annual sixth grade shake. We're actually going to make it a three-day event this year, so May 7 through the 9. And we have a lot of really, really cool things planned for this year shake. We actually have four rounds this year over the three days. So it's going to be busy, it's going to be a lot of fun. And you can, over those three days, May 7 through the 9, check our Facebook page. Mrs. Montgomery is going to kind of highlight how that's going. And you can get updates throughout those three days if you want to follow along with that. Our seventh graders are going to compete in the Shark Tank competition. They actually started that last year. We're going to do that again this year. It's going to be May 22 and 23. Our seventh graders will be divided up into small teams. They'll invent a product, work on marketing and advertising for that product, work on the financials, and then present the product and information to a group of judges. So we're excited to see who is going to win this year's Shark Tank adventure. And then our eighth graders finally will be going on their annual Washington DC trip. That's going to be May 14 through the 16. This is a great trip for our eighth graders to further learn about American history and government as well as view some of the iconic sites of our country. It's also a great time for our students to practice, obviously, all four grade levels, the essentials. That's what all this is about and represent our school in a very positive manner. So that's what we have going on in the middle school.
All right, good evening, everybody. So testing update for the high school. Sophomores completed their ELA tests last week, and then they will take geometry beginning tomorrow. Next week, they have biology and American history. So sophomores are the most heavily tested in the high school, as we know. Freshmen have their Algebra I test beginning tomorrow as well. So I encourage all of our high school students who have tests yet to take to give it their all and stay focused. Upcoming events, most of these are going to be senior events because this is the time that you hear me talk about seniors the most as so much is going on. Some update, an update on some of their events. On Friday, April 11, the seniors participated in interviews with area businesses here. We call it Senior Business Interview Day. This is a part of the senior seminar class and allows them to continue to practice those interview skills that we push so hard here at Hicksville. But it's also a chance for them to apply for local jobs as some of those employers come with job openings. So we had nine local businesses participate on that Friday, some of them having current positions to fill. So I want to thank Mrs. Wyman and Mrs. Van Horn for working to facilitate this and then all of the area businesses for coming out and interviewing with our students. It's a great opportunity for them. Next, Wednesday, April 30, the seniors will be venturing out into the community for the Senior Community Service Day. Mrs. Wyman has been working with village officials to line up jobs for our seniors to complete. This is a way for them to give back as an entire class, give back to the community. So they're going to be working on beautifying different parts of downtown in the park, doing things such as painting, cleaning, and landscaping work. On May 7, the seniors text to different judges that have volunteered their time to come in. So I'd like to thank all the community members and business leaders for their time doing that. And later on that evening, we have our senior awards ceremony in the Commons at 6:00 PM. This event is by invitation. So those seniors receiving awards will be notified via letter. And the seniors' last day here at HHS is Wednesday, May 21. That day, we will host the annual senior cookout and then their last walk-through of the halls before they leave for the day. And senior graduation practice is Friday, May 23 from 8:30 to 11:30 this year. Larger class, so we scheduled three hours for this year. And then on that same day, May 23, we're having a testing incentive day for grades nine through 11. This, we started this last year as a big hit, and I think the staff liked it as well. Students will be excused from class after lunch through the end of the day to enjoy various activities and fun out in the field house and just as a reward for all of their hard work towards testing this year. On Thursday, May 1, all of our juniors and seniors will be traveling to Tenora Performing Arts Center in the morning to participate in a county-wide assembly titled Think Fast Interactive. We did this a couple of years ago with our juniors and seniors. The county tries to provide something, fund something every other year. And this one's sponsored by Defiance County Health Department. It's geared towards making healthy and safe choices for students. So perfect timing for us right before our prom, which is that following Saturday or that Saturday. So we're going to be joining other students from across the county on that morning. The 2025 Junior/Senior Prom is Saturday, May 3. This year's theme is Old Hollywood Glamour. And the traditional student walk-in at the main event entrance will begin at 6:00 PM that night for the community. And prom itself kicks off at 7:00 PM and goes till 10:00. And post-prom is here at the school again this year, and that begins promptly at 11:00. And finally, I'd like to talk about House Pride Week a little bit. That's coming up, May 5 through the 9. That's where we work towards crowning a winning house for the year. Our house leaders work very hard towards that and the preparations for it all year long. The week will kick off with the annual Spring Shenanigans Assembly in the morning on May 5, and then various dress-up days and competitions for the students to earn house points. Stay tuned for more information from the house leaders on all the details for that. That's all I got.
I just wanted to extend a very big heartfelt thank you to the Eagles, the Hicksville Eagles. I was trying to look it up, the Fraternal Order of Eagles. I didn't know exactly how you identify them. But for their generous donation to our middle school cross-categorical classroom, Mrs. Deal went to them asking for a very meager amount of money to go towards their horse therapy sessions that she wanted the students to be, to participate in. And instead of them giving her that amount towards the donation, they went well above it. We are, their generosity and will not only support the horse therapy sessions, but will also fund additional vocational and functional life skills field trips. We're incredibly grateful for their support towards our students and our programs. As everybody's talked about, state testing is in full swing. It takes a lot of planning and organization. And it's, you know, it takes a lot of our heads together to make sure that we have proctors set, enough places for proctors. So a big shout out to everybody that's organized this season of testing. It's also important because we have to look and relook and make sure all the students are receiving the appropriate accommodations, we're meeting their needs according to their documents. So that's, you know, it's been, it's a big ordeal, but we're plowing right through and trudging along, and we're doing a great job and we're getting through everything. In the midst of testing season is also the peak time for individual education program conferences or IEP conferences. And I'm going to tell you that right in the middle of testing, the intervention specialists are also having to plan and organize and complete their IEP documents. I'm very proud of them. They're doing a great job. You know, I want to give a shout out to them for this time of year because it's very stressful. I just want to give you a roundabout number of IEPs that we're holding this year or will be held by the end of May. And that doesn't count preschool, it doesn't count the speech-only IEPs. But it's about a hundred, around 140 total IEP conferences, annual review conferences that we hold or will help, we will hold this year. I wanted, I brought this up a couple of months ago about an event that's coming up. I want to just kind of put it out there for parents of any student who's age 14 or older and who currently has an IEP. There's an event that's taking place that will inform parents about local agencies that provide supports for students in the areas of employment, recreation, and post-school services. While parents attend the informational session, students can enjoy a free movie with a snack at the Defiance Theater. This event will take place on June 10 and just be on the lookout for more information and flyers that will be sent home to everybody.
Angie, I'm just curious. I don't know if you know, I bet you do. How many one-on-one tests do you have to give? Because that takes a lot. Because that takes a lot.
Well, we do, all of our students on IEPs are one-on-one.
All right.
Yeah. I can't say all of them, some are two-on-one, it just depends on what their accommodations are. And then, we do have some students on 504s who need very minimal distract, like non-distracted areas, so it's best to do. We have some 504 students who may have dyslexia and decoding issues and fluency issues who have read aloud, so they're one-on-one.
So thank you for scheduling all that.
Well, it's not just me, trust me, it's all of us, yeah.
The admin team, stop. Thank you. Kirsten?
Yeah. It's hard to believe that we're winding down, but we are definitely not slowing down. Third and fourth grade finished their ELA testing two weeks ago, and we will be doing our math testing next week, so at least we had a little break in the middle. Ninety-three readiness and kindergarten students presented a very adorable concert last week to a very large crowd of proud parents and proud grandparents. It was astonishing walking into the gym to see how many individuals were in that gym, to see those little people. But kudos to Mrs. Kristen Wendell and the kids, they did, they really did a great job. And speaking of kindergarten, I know I wasn't here at the last board meeting. Kindergarten placement letters will be sent out this week, letting parents know our recommendation of placement. Currently, we have 76 students registered for next school year. That is a large number, because we typically have another 15, 20 that come out of the woodwork in the summer. So, we right now have our readiness class at 13 students, and our kindergarten classes are at 15 to 16 students, so we are off to a great start. And it's, and I mean, it's been wonderful since we've added the preschools out by the fieldhouse. We have four classes, and probably, I'd say about 85% of our kids are getting preschool experience, so that's amazing. And you really see a difference in their assessments when they're coming through. Our last principal's math club dance party is Friday, May 9th. Currently, we have 224 kiddos that have shake their booty with Mrs. Kaufman. To get into this fantastic club, you have to do 15 math facts in 30 seconds, and we just have a lot of fun. I'm feeling like I'm getting a little old to keep doing this.
No, she's not.
Our district art show is coming up on Friday, May 9th. The artwork will be displayed through the main event hallway in the Commons from 4:30 to 7:00. Chris Gagin and Joey Stevenson do such an amazing job with this event, and it's always very well-attended. And lastly, it's the season of field trips, elementary fun in the sun, third and fourth grade testing incentive for our Yest Day, fourth grade mega mall, Froggy Park visits, but just remember to participate in those events, we do have to have our school fees paid. And I know that Mrs. Montgomery, I kind of stole her back to help me with Yest Day, and she's basically, the kids are going to be very excited, and she's overdone herself again. So it's going to be a fun, fun day, so I'm looking forward to the kids' excitement. That's it.
And like your little math things, age is just a number, so you're fine.
Yes. I feel like a superstar when I'm out there anyway, so.
So you're calling the car practice?
Yeah.
So I can't move the next day. All right. Four County, Eric?
Sure, yeah. We talked a little while back about the adult education programs growing, so those are continuing to go in the right direction. They're also, Four County's also doing more with satellite offices, so all the local schools have the opportunity to work with Four County on satellite offices. And that's growing and seems to be going pretty well. When it comes to new construction, they have started pouring footers and doing some concrete work for the new electrical and welding labs. The official groundbreaking ceremony is May 2nd at 2:00. If you're bored and want to go watch a shovel get put in the ground.
All right. Okay, easy, Mr. Countryman?
Yep. Our ESC meeting this month highlighted, had some highlights from our attorneys, actually, it's our attorneys, Madison Britain, and so they talked about different updates that we needed with autism, focus classrooms, and some MD classroom enrollment, mentor program. They also talked about that at our meeting, and the Summer Honors Academy, in addition to the updates from Madison Britain. And then also, the school bus in-service is August 4th, so our bus drivers will be involved with that, and van drivers. We've also spent, I spent some time, Mike and I, preparing for negotiations. That'll be coming up here, we'll be starting that process, and looking forward to working with the Teachers Association on that. And then, you know, you sat and heard all these principals talking about everything that's going on in all, all that organization, and I really want to thank them because I know I put a lot on them with the testing a long time ago, even before, I think, Tony and Aaron were principals, but testing one-on-one was my request from a long, long time ago, and I know it takes a lot, and I'm very, very thankful for you guys organizing all of that, all you do to make that testing come together, because I really do believe that it helps, and they know that too, or they wouldn't be doing it. So thanks for all the work that you guys are doing and investing in our students with this testing time, so, yeah. That's it.
All right, so we'll move on to minutes and financials. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Galen.
I'll second.
Eric. Thank you. So, we have the minutes from the organizational and regular board meeting on February 17th, 2025. The treasurer's consent agenda items, including cash reconciliation as of March 31st, 2025. The financial statements for March 2025. Approve amended official certificate of estimated sources for fiscal year 2025 as presented. Total general fund resources of $19,347,445.42, and total resources for all funds of $24,380,494.58. Approve fiscal year 2025 permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $14,605,411.80, and total appropriations for all funds of $17,469,470.73. I think I should practice my numbers as an English teacher. This is like, those are big numbers.
Auctioneer.
Here we go. All right. So accept the following donations. $250 from Jim Schmidt Family of Dealerships for track and field. $1,000 from Mill Creek Inc. for track and field. $1,000 from Jennifer Ankeny for track and field. $100 from NIMCO for track and field. $277 from the bake sale for Special Olympics. From Mariah Anderson, her sister Christina Tadson did that. $100 from Matthew and Adrienne Bell for Special Olympics. $3,000 from Hicksville Eagles for the middle school cross-categorical classroom. And $200 from JDY Excavating for Class of 2027 for track concessions. Any discussion?
It was $100 from Jennifer.
Did I say $1,000? Because then I thought it, I'm like, I just say $1,000. Yeah. No. Well, maybe I should just text her and say, hey, I just took your donation.
Don't look at her, right in her tongue.
Yeah, I just talked to her parents, they're good neighbors. So, yeah, $100 from Jen Ankeny, sorry, Jen. Any?
Just to add, as far as funding and financials, again, talked about it last month, talked about other months, what the state budget happens, the finalization of that, that's due June 30th, is going to be a huge impact on what we are able to do in the future, so. Anyways, fingers crossed, representatives contacted, get to know what's happening so that we can represent ourselves as possible, and hopefully make a difference and ensure that our funding keeps us on solid ground.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Carrier?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Moving on to employment of certified staff, a motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen. Alexis Laguna as a certified substitute for the 2024-25 school year. Natalie Slattery as a certified substitute for the 24-25 school year. Elena Stuckey as a certified substitute for the 24-25 school year. Jamie Altman, middle school ELA and structured literacy teacher for the 25-26 school year. Caleb Vedder, elementary structured literacy teacher for the 25-26 school year. Allison Stury, kindergarten first-grade intervention specialist teacher for a two-year limited contract starting the 25-26 school year. Kylie Murphy for the eighth grade ELA instructor, one-year limited contract pending certification. Sarah Alstetter for high school social studies teacher, one-year limited contract with 25 years' experience, she's on Step 10. Tracy Mull for the third grade ELA teacher, it's a one-year limited contract with 25 years of experience, she's also at Step 10. Christine Steeman is the head girls' basketball coach for the 25-26 school year. David Moore, head wrestling coach for the 25-26 school year. A five-year limited contract to Eric Basset, Director of Operations. A three-year limited contract for the following. Jennifer Bennett, Bailey Tier, Amanda Wilitzer, Aubrey Giddings, Caitlin Niehaus, Amanda Wyman, Joey Stevenson, Emily Sell. A two-year limited contract for Madeline Bragg, Christine Steeman, Zach Yoder, Brooklyn Graber, Madison Stockman, Mike Myers, Jordan Wells. And also, a one-year limited contract to Sharon Kreitz. So, three of you are back there, thank you for coming to the meeting, it's good to see you, I am very happy for you. And I do, especially, no offense Kylie, but to the more experienced teachers, I'm glad that you could get in at Step 10, that's in Ohio, that's never guaranteed, so, good thing. Okay. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you for putting like what they're teaching, because we always ask you what the new teachers are. It's just nice, it's right there, it's great.
It's nice.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. The employment of classified staff, a motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric, thank you, Galen. To accept the resignation for Trista Franklin as co-chair coach and co-assistant cheer coach effective March 23rd, 2025. Kenneth Dougal as full-time custodian with zero years' experience, to start on April 14th, 2025. Alexis Laguna as a classified substitute for the 24-25 school year. Natalie Slattery as a classified substitute for the 24-25 school year. Elena Stuckey, thanks again for coming. Elena Stuckey as a classified substitute for the 24-25 school year. Supplemental contracts to the following at the minimum wage rate of $10.70 an hour for summer of 2025 technology assistance for Alex Rost and Merrill Yanez. Madison Steeman, our coach 60% for 24-25 school year. Ashley Hammond is the co-assistant track coach for 25%, 24-25 school year. Cornelia JR. Mendoza is the co-assistant track coach 15% for 24-25 school year. John Hagerty is a volunteer track coach for the 24-25 school year. Dylan Welch is the head boys' basketball coach for the 25-26 school year. We will issue a three-year limited classified contract to Bridget Hoblit, and issue a two-year limited classified contract to both Trista Franklin and Mallory Sarche. Issue a one-year limited contract to the following classified staff. Mariah Anderson, Mary Glass, Courtney Rittenhouse, Jasmine Walder, Sandy Zuber, Morgan Bostader, Shelby Ori, Hope Snyder, Shelley Weatherhead, Tamara Chamou, Kaylee Reed, Dawn Van Horn, and Elizabeth Yaser. Discussion?
If this affects Dr. Hagerty's availability, I will find him here. I want you to know that, John.
That has probably happened to Mr. Hagerty a few times, so I wouldn't hazard a guess. All right.
That's all I have to say.
And we very likely will, we will have more to approve at the next meeting, too.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you breaking it up.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Services in agreement, it's a motion, please. I'll move. Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
Thank you. To promote 419 Creative Content Contract beginning July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, the contractor shall be responsible for scheduling and posting content to Hicksville Exempted Village School District social media channels. Discussion?
I know we've talked about it in the past, but she doesn't outstanding.
She's real, and it's nice just to be able to reach out and see it. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. And then, we move on to other business.
I'll second.
Tyler, thank you, Eric. Resolution number 2025-06, resolution to adopt special education model policies and procedures as presented. Guarantee trust life insurance company application for blanket student accident insurance. Resolution number 2025-07, resolution authorizing the solicitation of professional design services. New and revised Board of Education bylaws and policies for technical corrections. A review of the policy, the drug-free workplace, reimbursement for college tuition, student supervision and welfare. Number 2271 is College Credit Plus program. 2340 is field and other district-sponsored trips. 2430.O2 is participation of community and STEM school students in extracurricular activities. 2431, interscholastic athletics. 2460, special education. 3213, student supervision and welfare. 4213, student supervision and welfare. 4438, vacation. 5113, inter-district open enrollment. 5131, student transfers. 5136.0, electronic equipment. 5223, release time for religious instruction during a school day. 5330 is use of medications. 5350, student mental health and suicide prevention. 5460, graduation requirements. 5610, removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion of students. 5751, parental status of students. 5780.01, Parents' Bill of Rights. 6325, procurement, federal grants and funds. 6460, vendor relations. 7421, restrooms, locker rooms, shower rooms, and changing room. 7440.O1, video surveillance and electronic monitoring. 8142 is criminal history record check for contracted school services. 8452, automated external defibrillators, those are the AEDs that you'll find in the school, and 8500, food services. Also, we have Student Wellness and Success Funds and Disadvantaged Pupil Impact Aid Plan, and we're going to have a presentation for that in just a moment, all right? Some light reading for all of us when we're reading over policy, so much fun. Okay, discussion.
I have questions. What are we, how are we going to handle 5223?
Yeah, so religious release time.
We worry about when someone asks.
Okay.
It's, we have to approve the policy, we have no choice.
Yeah.
So.
We just didn't set any limits, so I just.
I don't, I don't know how one would set limits, I mean, on the.
It's, it's up to the school to decide on day, time, how often, how long. I mean, there's no limits on those by the state.
Right.
We just have to allow it.
Right.
So.
So I think we will have to worry about that when that time comes, is what I, my, that's my best answer for now.
Okay. How often do you expel students?
Rarely, very, very rarely.
I was just, in reading through it, I didn't realize, like, we had to be provided information.
Yeah, do we, we didn't have any this year, did we? No. So far.
Yeah, not on what, because.
We're not gonna either.
This is the squirrely time of the year.
We get anxious.
Is the state still trying to figure out that 5223 is not due? Finally settled on the.
I think there's time on it, so.
Pardon?
I think there's times listed in the policy, I have to review it again. I didn't really want to know that, or I would have been more prepared, sorry.
The Parents' Bill of Rights, are we, like, doing educational for, like, the staff? Are we, like, in service, like, professional development? Just like, the new policy and the Parents' Bill of Rights, I mean, it's been.
Again, I'd have to review that. There's, you saw the whole list of them, so I don't want to speak without knowing, if you'd have told me ahead of time, I would have had answers for you, sorry, Jen.
I think that some, I, we've already started addressing this in our building, so. I think that some, I, we've already started addressing this in our building, so I'm assuming that it should be happening.
I think through government classes, the bill of rights stuff, parents' bill of rights, anything about that? Do you know anything, Eric? No? Yeah. I can let you know, Jen.
Okay. All right, and then Jane, thank you, has a presentation for us.
Well, thank you for allowing me to present. Mr. Ruin came to me a few months ago and asked for some help with this. Student Wellness and Success Fund and disadvantaged pupil impact aid are monies that we've been receiving for several years, but we need to, there are some things that we need to do as far as presenting information to boards and then sharing it on our website. So, I'm going to tell you about the requirements. I'm going to tell you about how we're spending the money. And I guess if you have financial questions, you ask him. If you have questions that I can answer through this, I would gladly do that. But these are some of the requirements that as a district we need to do in order to receive these funds. We are required to spend 50% of the student wellness money on physical and mental health services. We have to have at least two collaborators on the plans for both of them, and we have several, including the ESC, the Health Department, United Way, Economic Development Board. We also partner with Prometica Defiance, Health Partners of Western Ohio, and Parkview Health System, and their Department of Sports Medicine. These, this plan will be shared with you annually, and after you approve it, then it will be posted on our website after, like I said, after it's amended. We are going to report this annually to you, so what I'm sharing with you is fiscal year 25, but next fall we will share fiscal year 26 with you. We are required to use funding to support initiatives outlined by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Development. So the first plan is, or the first monies that we get, the allocation for student wellness and success. Currently, as of, the allocation on 4/7/25 is $277,767, or $67.29. I always love that we get these oddball numbers. 29 cents, make sure it's spelled. The first, so I'm going to talk to you about what the goals are with the student success So, goal number one is to employ a full-time nurse. And that, you know, we have a nurse that services all students in pre-K through 12, and, you know, she provides basic medical care and for physical well-being and mental well-being. We employ a strength and conditioning instructor. You know, this is so that our students can have opportunities to build their own personal fitness in a safe, structured, and supervised environment. Goal number three is an athletic trainer. We contract with an athletic trainer to provide instruction on ways to prevent sports illness, injuries, and to offer corrective, comprehensive rehabilitation when those injuries do occur. Goal four then is a full-time social worker. She services all students in grades pre-K, 12, and she works to provide students with access to wraparound services outside the school day. And goal number five under student wellness and success is, we are fortunate that we have three full-time guidance counselors. One at elementary, middle school, and high school, and they play a critical role in supporting our students and assessing the health and well-being of those students. The disadvantaged pupil impact aid plan, right now that allocation stands at $627,019.11. And these numbers do fluctuate a little bit when the allocations come in, twice a month, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so they can fluctuate just a little bit, but I think, we talked about this this morning, they've remained pretty close to these numbers throughout this year.
May I ask an ignorant question?
Yes.
Where does this money come from?
This is state.
So this is all state money?
Yes, correct. It's through the state foundation program. It's state. The disadvantaged pupil impact aid, we've entered the year with about $62,000, $63,000, but when we went to the CEP program, in which we went free lunches for all students, that impacted the formula for DPIA and increased it. It actually had bumped it up to closer to $650,000, but they seem to take off a couple, $2,000 or $3,000 every two weeks when we get our funding. I'm not sure what all impacts that, but a lot of it is impacted by what's happening in other parts of states, of the state, and what their numbers are. But anyways, that is our most recent updated allocation for this year, $627,000. I would not expect it to change much between now and the end of this school year.
So would budget renewal have an impact on it?
The budget renewal has had very little, hasn't really addressed DPIA funding.
Okay.
So, good question.
So, what the DPIA, what we use, how we spend that money in these goals, we have two full-time structured literacy coaches. You know, you just hired Kayla to step into the elementary, so that's one area. We also have one full-time and one part-time credit recovery instructors that help students who are behind, get them caught up, and then additional instructional time. Now, this is interesting, this instruct, additional instruction time. Our district's hours that students are in session are over the state minimum. Currently, the state rule is that for K-5 students, it's 910 hours per year, and for 612, it's 1,001 hour per year. So what we're able to do is figure out what excess hours are that we're in session, and then that, that teacher's salary can be added as instructional, extra instructional time, or paid for that way. Right, Mrs.?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And that's important, because both the student wellness success and disadvantaged pupil impact aid, basically, we have to use it or lose it.
Yeah.
Now, they do allow us to roll over unused funds, like, into the next year, but, you know, then it piles on top of whatever else is already there.
I was going to ask that, too, so.
So, but yes, so it's important that, in the whole planning of all this, that we have a plan in place to ensure that we spend 100% of what is coming our way.
Any other questions? You have, in your packet, you have, like, the full retail plan, which spells out each of those goals and why we have that goal, and what obstacles, and what the benefits or what the outcome we hope will be.
How long has a school been receiving, like, these kinds of funds?
Student Wellness Success was started by Governor DeWine, probably his first biennial budget, several years back, or five, six years ago. And DPIA, disadvantaged pupil impact aid, has been around for a long time. It just happens to change its name every so often. So maybe it might have been DPIA originally, then it became like disadvantaged economic funding, and there's been other names, so, yeah, that one's been around for quite a while. But student wellness success is a fairly new initiative.
Okay.
A lot of that, I think, spun out around the time COVID hit, and, or at least it's been used that way, for example, by adding social workers come in, very, very helpful for situations related to the COVID impact and other things like that, so. Any other questions?
Thanks for sharing.
Thank you, Jane.
I want to clarify something. Jen, did you ask what the parents' bill of rights was or how it would impact us?
I was just asking if, like, you were doing educational for, like, the staff.
Okay, yeah, I do want to touch on that. I was caught off guard a little bit when I was asked about it. I do know a little bit. I will say that is going to most closely impact our guidance counselors, and they have been trained on that in meetings that they've gone to, because Neola Wyman's come back and talked to me about it. I will say they're a little concerned about how it will impact their work, because you have to notify parents of some things that students now share with them. So I think it will most closely impact them. I don't know exactly what this Neola policy says. I mean, I need to look at that, too, but I don't know if it will direct us to do anything else with other staff. Some of this stuff, we actually already are doing, like, the opt-out of different sexual related material, you know, like, that stuff, where I think we're already compliant with. But I think it's going to most closely affect the guidance counselors.
And I think there was just some scary stories online about, like, what other people have encountered with.
Well, because not for nothing, it's not very specific. It talks about sexual issues, but what, what do you want to, I mean, biology is one big walking piece of sexual issues. I mean, when you're talking about just taking a biology class. So, it's not, personally, I don't think that the writing is as clear as what it should be. And so that leaves so much gray area, like, it says the school must. I'm like, must? Okay, so what exactly do they, the qualification of it?
I guess my, my concern is just reading some of those stories and stuff. It's, it's, I feel like outside organizations will come in and attack your staff member for what they said or didn't say, and, you know, I feel like our staff, because of these things, have to tiptoe around, you know?
Yeah, right.
And you don't want them to say or do the wrong thing, and there's people out there that just love to sue you.
Yeah, certainly a concern.
That was more of the, that was the reasoning behind my question. It was just professional development.
Usually things like this, I'm, I'm almost positive that our admin meeting in the fall will probably touch on it, you know, it's in effect now. New legislation, they usually do a good job of letting us know, okay, now what do you need to do? That hasn't come across my desk at all or any of my principal meetings lately, but my guess would be the ESC will touch on it soon.
Well, and sometimes I feel like we're, like, things happen in bigger cities or something, and then it comes across that, oh, okay, maybe we should do it this way now. We've learned from that.
That's the case in a lot of things like that, that it's more prevalent in those, you know?
Yeah.
Something to be said for being as insulated as what we are at times.
Right.
Any other discussion? All right, so, roll call please.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Any old business that you would like to broach, discussion? I think we need to discuss a few things probably. What do I have written down? So, some things maybe to discuss, these three things that are coming up in our world, whether we like it or not, and things we've discussed. Do you want to address it?
Sure. The, the policy that you approved tonight was from the attorney, just giving where that resolution will give us permission to go out now and advertise in the newspaper for a potential building project out back. It doesn't mean we're building or anything, but it gives us the authorization to get more detailed information as far as cost analysis, timing, that kind of stuff. So, that is the first step that we would have to do before we even entertain, you know, building, is to get more, and that gives us the permission to do that, so.
Yeah.
It'll go out in the paper for a couple weeks, and then, then that information will come in, and then we can select, I think the way the attorney explained it, we select them, and then they'll work with a potential builder to get more detailed drawings and a more detailed cost analysis on the potential STEAM building out back, and a bus barn as well. So, they, we talked about that at our work session, so, yeah, it's not building anything or doing anything at this point, it's just getting some information so we can make a good decision.
Because it's hard to, it's hard to plan and talk about things when we don't know if it's 2,000 or 10,000.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly, that's right. So that's what this would help us do. You know, right now, we have a guesstimate. This would give us a lot better of an idea so that you can make a decision on what you want to do.
I think it's a good timing, too, with, like, that project and.
Yeah.
And this state budget and.
Yeah, and just to be clarified, this, what Mr. Country is talking about is that resolution number 2025-07, authorizing for design services.
Did I answer everything on that one?
I think so.
You mean for now?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's just going to be continued discussion.
Right.
For some time. And I don't see any unannounced guests?
One other thing on discussion, I think we had talked about another work session coming up sometime, was that a month or two ago, that we had just kind of thrown it around out there, if I remember right.
Another one? Okay.
If we want to get something scheduled or not, but.
I think, I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, I think we did that, like, last year in June, if I'm not mistaken, and we did a tour of the facilities and that kind of stuff. I don't know if that's what you're having in mind, or.
I'm open for that. I'm flexible, I guess. I don't, I don't care too much either way.
I mean, I don't know what topics you want to do, but I know the last year when we did that, that's what we did. We met, and then we toured all the facilities.
Because I think seeing the bus barn was something that was like, oh. Yeah, that's, that's a lot of money to house under, something that one match could take away very quickly.
Yeah, so, yeah, Eric, I mean, I don't know, I think that's a great idea, and, you know, maybe submit some topics to staff if you'd like, and then we can.
Do that in our.
Narrow that down and to a manageable number so that we can meet and talk about it, or, you know, have a work session, or whatever it is you want to do.
Yeah, so I'll send out an email to you guys, that way you don't have to email me. I'll send out an email and then separately, and then each of you can respond, because if it's all of you, it's a board meeting. So, one at a time, and then just reply with your thoughts. That would be great.
Then, then we'll schedule it.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay.
And we are not going into executive session. Our next meeting would be scheduled for Monday, May 19th, at 5:30. Does that work for everyone? Yes?
Yeah.
So, I guess it is 6:58, and I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Galen. And roll call please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, meeting is.